That have 150 bags each that the kids rake up and then bag up at the day of caring. So there's quite an effort to pick these up.
Could be any way next year to do the springling pickup or conjunction with the day of caring?
We can, we can work on it. Right now, the day of caring day is kind of selected through the schools because they've kind of spearheaded the day of caring project, whereas the environmental and energy committee kind of look at the spring and the spring cleanup. So we can try to coordinate between them to get a day that's closer and maybe work with the school in terms of being okay with those bags sitting out there until the spring cleanup.
The city always does theirs on Saturday. The school always does theirs on school day.
It just seems like I'm doing the same thing twice.
Yes, the first Wednesday of the month that, first Wednesday in May, that is the day of caring.
Well, I'm not sure if we had three haulers do the day of caring last year, but from what I heard, they were coming there most of the day and they could barely get it done. So I just don't know. I don't know that for sure, but we probably have to check with the haulers if they can squeeze it all.
Excuse me, we have as an energy and environmental committee, we have talked about trying to include the day of caring and the spring leaf pickup together. And unless, the residents will like having it on the weekend because it allows them to get their bags out on Friday night and then they're gone on Saturday. So if they're gone during the week or something, that they don't have to have their leaves sitting out in the bags all week long. And then with day of caring, as Greg said, there's so much to pick up that they have a hard time getting it all done. And then if we don't pick it up on Wednesday and it's windy or rainy, then it sits until Saturday. And then you end up with a lot of leaves blowing all around. So we've discussed it and we'll continue to discuss it. You know, I'm sure to see if we can find a way to work it together, but it's something we have talked about several times.
Just one other question, I know with the day of caring, don't they do some stuff like out by Randall and some other stuff too? Do we pick up those also?
We do not pick up any of that stuff. Randall takes care of all of their items out there. School district, because that's within the school, their kids go out there to help.
I know there's, the action was being done out more than just in city limits, little halls. That's why I don't know if we're paying them to pick up another town school or...
Our limits are certainly the city limits of little halls, yes.
Any other questions for Greg? How many are there?
Yep, so as I mentioned last time, and we had some discussion to it, but I guess looking for further direction from the council, the energy environmental committee made their recommendations for what they requested to see for the government contracts is coming here. They expire at the end of the year and we're getting to the point now where we want to get ready to start those negotiations. So I think it would be important for the council to come up with their, either their recommendations back to the energy environmental committee or their, to have these discussions about what they want to see in those negotiations in terms of the number of haulers that we're going to participate, any changes to the contract in terms of how the collections are done. There's been a lot of talk about bins versus bags. You know, the recycling itself is kind of a tough one because of the limitations with the market availability and markets change with those in terms of combing away and glass contamination, which plastics can be picked up, all sorts of those other items. But you know, I think it's important for us prior to going into negotiations and when we have the negotiations that we have the direction, definitive direction, the council of this is, these are the things that are very important. These are the things that we want to accomplish with the pickup in the next contract. And then if there's any other direction about the length of the contract or debt split in terms of if it's two haulers versus three haulers, then how we want to adjust that moving forward and kind of target the early June time to potentially be starting negotiations. So we have everything twice before the end of the year. Because likely, you know, making any significant changes to it is going to be a changing cost, but it's kind of that convenience factor versus equity factor in terms of bins versus bags. As we have staffed this kind of determined, bags are certainly our most equitable way of charging for garbage. You know, you really feel for what you're throwing away, but the convenience and disruption of a bin falling into the curbside pickup is generally more commonly accepted practice nowadays. And I've seen that in my previous meetings. So it's certainly something that is done, can be done. Want to talk about haulers, about what it would take certainly to do that, so.
That way is probably less likely to have throw-ins and things ripping it up.
Certainly, there's, you know, there's always going to be that winds or snows or something, vehicles, you know, causing some issue with it, but it's definitely going to be a lot cleaner. You're not going to get bags thrown open from putting them into the bin versus bags sitting on the curbside. I mean, the energy environmental committees was kind of a compromise to allow people to put in as well, you know, their own can that they're providing with a city purchase bag in that so that the hauler, the bag hauler can try to pick up, so.
Well, I'm sure everybody else might know where they've heard about this for the last three, four, or more years and the concerns with not having the cans and the bags hidden tore up. Now I'm hearing, as we've been in discussion, why would the people that decide to want to have, to have a can, why would they have to purchase the bags to put inside the can? Because then you got a bag inside a bag inside a can. And you know, that's the, to me, that's probably the biggest problem with that choice is it's a choice to have a can, but still have to have the bag and then you could charge the bag inside of it. So to me, that's, the people that want it for that convenience, it seems to me we're double charging them because they've got to buy the can. And if the price I saw on cans, and I never double checked it, but I saw something on around 40 bucks for a can that I, so if you buy a bunch of them, that doesn't take a lot of bags to pay that, that 40 bucks for the can. And if the cans last five years. And I know my concern would be the inequity of the size of the load. And you know, I talked to a lot of guys that, you know, it's, that's just the way it is. Unfortunately, you've got the garbage can, you give the service. You know, if you've got one bag in there, you've got four bags in there costing the same as what we call the inequality. So.
And it's certainly something to be considered too, that people purchasing the bags, they're always going to be purchasing the bags, and that's kind of a fixed cost to garbage collection itself. We're not just a flat drive-by fee, recycling fee that we're paying. You know, we're also covering that, or they're covering that cost of the bag too. So you know, it's not just the base fee that we're thinking, it's also how much garbage are people putting down. But at least this way, they kind of get that, they get to manage that a little bit on their own rather than paying one month for a lot more collection than they actually probably need.
So what's the full disadvantage of the city just getting out of there, business being done with it? Just let everybody go willy-nilly and deal on your own?
Yeah, the lot of, the lot of cons are just the vehicle traffic from the haulers on the roadways of, you know, and having that, but.
And then what, we lose our score funding?
Correct.
Which is dollar one per year, do you know roughly? Three grand, five grand, 10 grand?
We just got, I think part, there's 9,800 and then the other part is like $6,000.
15 grand?
Well, I read a lot of things that are in that discussion about the empty trucks was the damage to those that were, they're not doing anything.
One, if I can add something to that, one garbage truck wasted about 1,200 cars or pickup trucks going down the road. So if you open it up, you know, there's a potential for two, three, four haulers, multiply that by your 1,200 vehicles and it can, it can add up on the damage to the pavement.
Don't matter though, if we got one can here, one can there, we're not going to be down the road anyhow chasing the one can behind, trucks chasing the bags, so.
I was going to say, past my place, there's two trucks going. So it's a matter of having one more truck or, you know, they drive by, or Tremwood drives by and picks up the bags. And Bob drives by and picks up whoever has a can that don't want a monkey with the bags. So it's a matter of having one more truck going by and giving people the opportunity to have whoever they want to have. There, I pay for a drive-by fee every month. I really don't get anything out of that drive-by fee. Where does that money go to the drive-by fee? That $14 and some stuff?
That's going to pay the haulers for their...
Do the haulers get the whole works? Or does the city get something?
We get an administrative portion. We thought it was administrative.
$3, $3, $4?
$2.
So there, them drivers are going by my place, I'll use an example. Every month they're making $12 just driving by my place because I don't use the bag system. So I talked to a lot of people out in that area getting it. And I went for a bike ride and I threw some people out along and I stopped and talked to them to see. And that's one thing they're really upset with is that drive-by. Why they're paying it and garbage isn't, the garbage people that are getting it aren't picking anything up. Like I said, they're making $12 a month past my place. That's just one. Every month just driving by my place. If there's no garbage, you're still getting that $12. And that's what upsets people, that they talk about, why don't the city get out of the garbage business and let everybody get whoever they want to get? They want to get Burkhart, if they want to get Tremlett, if they want to get Lemire? So be them. But I don't know, that's just what I agree.
And a lot of, you know, this is all prior to my, my arrival, like we came six months ago and organized collection here has been established for 15 years, or more. I mean, it's been that they were having those arguments, I'm sure, prior to getting this established. But once you go to an organized collection, establishing the rates for what it costs to provide that service for everyone in the community, we have to calculate it, every resident and, or every customer that could potentially be having them picked up and factoring that into the cost, so.
But if the city got out of the garbage business?
If we got out of the garbage business...
There wouldn't be no such thing because everybody'd get their own, right?
Everybody would be paying what the market would be bearing.
Whatever you can get.
The haulers would be charging.
Right.
Then, you know, afford that service.
More than what they're paying now, it might be.
It would very likely be more than what they're paying.
And they're also getting another service through the score grant.
Yes.
In the spring, if all we have our leaf all the way, I think we do some other recycling.
Are both the garbage and the fine pickup is paid for by the score grant?
So that's another service they're getting where they have to pay, which adds to another expense, not only the roads being ripped up, the score grant helps in many ways. And it does kind of keep where there's three guys working, two now, but maybe three, where they can kind of set a price and get together, which is advantageous to have that sometimes instead of just willy-nilly and...
I would, you know, I'm not a market expert in garbage hauling, but I would say that an organized collection is more than often than not going to yield a better price for the, for the residents on pickup. As far as the other services that go to, that's, those are things that if we don't, you know, if we're not providing them, they're going to go away because there's no more collections. We're either going to come up with that money ourselves to do it out of taxpayer dollars because we feel it's necessary because we're going to lose those grant dollars that are covered in those costs. So that's...
You know, the thing is, you get the old people that are complaining that they want cans or don't want cans, but when you think about it, they claim they only use one bag a month, while they're paying $15 for drive-by and $2 for bag, they're getting their garbage for 16 bucks a month, 17 bucks a month. They go to a can for 25 or 30. They'll be complaining why we got rid of it too. So it's, well, you gotta be going both ways.
The other thing, when we talk that there's already two going by, if we had discussed something like three haulers splitting it up, and if we give that one to cans, then it wouldn't be two or three drive-by, there'd only be one drive-by grant. So it'd be one in each area. So there we take care of the wear and tear, we keep the score grant, and I really don't think it's going to cost that much more than buying those bags if we just want to put your garbage bags.
Right, I think we can't do this, we won't get the score fund if we don't use like the bags to control how much, so they have to be the bags that would go into the dumpster, correct?
No, we would, we could potentially still get the score funding even if they go to the canisters.
For the...
Yeah, we could. That, that issue is a more fairness, and I want to, it's a fairness issue. I mean, you're paying for your garbage that you're actually using or, you know, setting out versus paying for the size of a dumpster that you have, whether it's full or not.
Right.
That's, that's the advantage of the bags is it's more volume-based.
I thought there's something to do with more volume-based because you know, like, you pay for each bag you put out versus the dumpster, you back it to the hauler, you can have...
Or one bag or no bag.
So I thought that was kind of the deal with, to encourage recycling, the people who recycle, if they have to pay for each bag versus they got a...
Dumpster that's...
Their dumpster's half-full of garbage if you throw all the recycling in it and let it go, is where I thought we ran into the issue with some of this.
Right, and that, that was definitely part of the discussion.
You know, on the other side of it is too, the county's going to, their landfill is going, certainly going to be concerned about what our decision is.
Right.
I think that was probably a big driver to the organized collection in the past was they were seeing the rates of landfill usage going up and they were running out of, you know, they didn't have the facility, the means to keep up with that at that rate. So they're urging us to move to an organized collection to kind of mitigate that. And I think what you're seeing now is the success of that because we're seeing more recycling, less tonnage going through the landfill, but.
But they're working on a new cell developed, so.
You know, we've been through this before, and all the same issues are brought up. You're never going to win because people are going to disagree one way or another. We have to look at what's best, you know, like what you're just saying, if we can keep down the garbage in this town, it's better for landfill, which will cost us less in the future. We have to build another landfill and the prices are going to go up. We do get, there's a lot of benefits from the bag and a lot of benefits from the other way. It's which one outweighs the other. You know, I know in the past, we really fought hard to get three haulers in and ended up with two. I would like to see three haulers. I think it would be fair and I think would cover the town. As far as bags, I don't mind buying my own container and putting my bag in it. It's easier to maintain the container if you don't have a lot of stuff sticking in there and stuff. A lot of people aren't going to want to wash their things all over the time.
I, I know in my previous community with the containers, it was, it was part of the ordinance that the item or garbage was to be bagged and put in the container. So that wasn't just...
Either way it's bagged.
Loose trash in there because I think, you know, lids will fly open and cans will tip over and you'll lose everything anyway. So it was always, it was part of the ordinance, part of our ordinance, that you did have things bagged in the container. But what Greg was saying was it's a bag within a bag, you know, because they're still going to put it in our city bag that's going to determine the maximum total of volume or poundage of garbage that they're going to put in any one bag. So it's, yeah, you're, you're in a position where it's kind of this compromise and balance in finding out what is best. I think you make a good point, like if the landfill does fill up and they have to build another one or expand it, that capital cost is going to be borne on the people using it. So the cost is going to go up at that point for all the residents because the tipping fees are going to go up. So somebody's end up, going to end up paying for that, so.
I think the big thing most people have complained to me about is drive-by fee. As in the past, snowbirds go away, they don't have it during that time. Some people feel that's unfair, you know, because they're not using it anyway, so why should they pay for it? But it's, it's just so difficult to try and monitor all that stuff. It's almost like you have to go with a base and just stick with it. Maybe a snowbird should get break, you know, that's what I'm saying. And it's fair all the way around, but we do need drive-by fees. Does any of that fee go towards the landfill itself? You know, do we pay a portion or?
Does that incorporate their costs for the tipping fees?
Tipping fees are included in the drive-by fee and then partially in the bag fee as well, so you know, when they're...
So that's something going towards them too.
When they, when they landfill the garbage, they're paying the tipping fee to dump it and that's borne in part by the drive-by.
If we didn't have that, they're going to raise rates because they still have to make up for that loss, so. I don't know.
Well, the people that recycle, they're paying recycling fee, so that's one reason to do it because you're paying for it anyway. And you know, and maybe I'm rare, but I, we recycle. It's good to recycle, once you get into that habit. I don't know, you know, I can't speak for, you know, what the percentage is and who actually does it because they have to pay for it and because it's the right thing to do or who would, if we switched the cans, who's going to dump everything in there rather than putting it in a green container? It's just, I don't think it's going to be anything that's going to put our landfill in danger of filling up in two weeks earlier.
My, my experience has been that people that recycle are going to continue to recycle regardless of it's, you know, can, combing, who's like, you know, they're going to do it because they feel it's the right thing to do. I don't, I'm not certain how many of them will pay for it, but if you provide that, you know, you provide a new container or two, you provide two containers for them, you're, I'd say you're making one of the more easier recycling methods. And you know, I know it is kind of a pain to bundle stuff and they make sure you keep your glass and plastics separate, but you provide all of the plastics, you got, you can mix tin and plastic together, that's, that's better than I've experienced in my, you know, in all places that I've been, so. You know, I just want to explain to my, my previous community, the way the financing worked on our can collection. We did have for the residents, three prices of cans. And then, so when we have, with our contract with our hauler, we only had one available in the county to do collections, so the contract negotiations were pretty easy and they were, and they were fair and good to work with. But we paid them a flat charge for the contract of their service, so that was going to be consistent every single, and then we paid them based on the actual weight, the tipping fees that they paid. So we separate, we had it counted for two separate weights. And if we moved to the, to the can pickup, I think that would be something that I would consider us moving to and figuring that out so that people could understand, this is the portion that's going for them to drive by your house and this is the portion that's going to them to dump the trash at the landfill. Because right now, you know, yeah, the drive-by fee seems like a lot, but that's also incorporating the cost of the garbage. So you know, that, I guess that's throwing that out of the way. So that might, might help us, people understand that drive-by fee is more than just them to drive by the house even if they're not picking it or if they're not, it's for all the other garbage that's going from our residential customers alone to the landfill.
Do the rural county people, do they pay a drive-by fee also?
Do, no, because they get whoever they want.
They just get whoever they want, they have no, no stipulation.
And they pile it up in the trailer and take it once a month, the landfill on the road.
There's people in town here doing that and I don't know what they're gaining because it's a nuisance having a trailer full of garbage. And it's not fun to drive out there and throw that stuff off by hand, you know, but...
You think they're getting even?
They might save $5 a month and put in 10 hours to do it.
Well, that's just saying, we've got other ones in town, you know, you see Long Prairie Sanitation, you see Waste Management, you know, you see all kinds of dumpsters around town, it's...
Mostly the dumpster and the...
Right. So does anybody have any thoughts going forward or we want to explore any other avenues or continue with what we got before we waste a bunch of time and money in negotiating contracts and they come back and say, no, that's not what we want?
I'd like to see cans. I'd like to see where we don't have to purchase the bags, put it inside the cans. I'd like to see three haulers, split it up three ways, sign a three-year contract, rotate it by the three areas, have one, then you don't have to worry about the bags, like we discussed before, that they'd all have different bags. And I'd like to see something integrated that John spoke about as far as the tipping fees and separating that out. I think it'd be fair to the haulers, fair to the residents and fair to us.
It's, it's within the contract right now to that by request, but I just got a monthly report every time I got an invoice from our hauler. It said, this is what we dumped in residential weight, this is what we dumped in commercial weight, this is what the total bill is. So, and we took, we picked, we charged for the commercial rate. We had a flat fee for dumps, for a dumpster and then multiply by how many times we picked up a month, so. You know, we did, we controlled all of the garbage, but we actually, my city actually had the city, the city did the garbage collection. They only done the garbage truck at a full-time employee hired to go pick up the trash, so.
So it's not a problem.
Yeah, that's a, that's not a business I want to get into.
And that would be based on if we can continue to get our score grant.
Yeah.
Because I think that's important. I, you know, I think we're cleaning up the neighborhoods. I know when I walked out tonight and I looked down the road and I see those couple of bags at the end of the driveways and they're everywhere, I just, I don't think that makes us look attractive. And what's even worse in the morning, if the animals do that.
So we're going to be entertained to have more than one size of can?
I think so for your, for your single, like an elderly lady or a guy, they don't have a lot of trash, you should go to...
And we had three, three, three can sizes and it was up to the hauler to provide that can size. They would come in, set up their utility count, so it's what size of can we want, we call a hauler and they would deliver.
I know my son's moved out. We went from two bags a week, now one bag in a hurry. Sometimes if I could stand the smell, I'd keep it going, but I'll put it out there half-full.
But really, cans are really, when you think about it, are cheaper than what the bags are. I went on the internet and got prices for 35 to 16 to 90. And you figure bags are dollar, what, $14 or...
Dollar forty, $14.20 per 10.
Okay, say you have...
And we're not collecting any profit to that, that was the cost.
And say you, that's, say you have one bag a week. So that's times 52, a dollar 40 times 52, right? And a can, I looked up a can and I don't know if the rest of you got a price, right? You eat that sheet, I gave a sheet to Greg. And I, it, it's like $45 for the small can and 55 and 65. I, I don't know if that's exactly right, but it's close. So if you keep that can for five years, you're coming out ahead not buying those bags. Those bags are...
Yeah, it's...
But the bags cover part of, cover the, part of the garbage, right?
That's what I was going to say.
The $2.30 just came for the plastic bag.
No, it, it covers...
A dollar, whatever.
So if we do get rid of the bags, we're going to have to make up that difference. The haulers are going to charge a little more, well, maybe a lot more. But they have to make up the difference. They still have to come up with their profit at the end of the year. So they're not just going to say, okay, no more bags or anything, we're going to keep the price the same. They're going to jack it up a little.
But are they going to jack it up that much to what it's going to be over five years?
I think it's going to balance all of...
I don't think so.
Well, I need to muddy the waters just a little bit more here, right? So if I spend a weekend cleaning my basement as it is right now, I can use as many bags as I'm willing to pop for in one week and get rid of it. So what happens if we go to a can?
How we addressed that was you could go into city hall, you could buy a tank, a bright orange tank, that you could wrap onto any garbage bag and set that out and haulers would pick that up. It was $2 for that tank. So if you had five of them, you could buy five bags and set out five bags of garbage. For cans and tanks.
For cans and tags.
Is there a way you could talk to the haulers where they can give a price both ways, if we use bags or if we use containers? So we, we can look at it and actually know if we're going to stay for one thing, it makes a little more sense.
Yeah, and it's, for the haulers, they have to, they have to agree beforehand what their, what the prices that they're negotiating, like we said before, we're not negotiating three different prices for three different haulers to do an organized collection, it's just going to be one price with all three of them providing the same service. So if they're willing to figure else, they'll send it out, we'd certainly be willing to ask those questions, right?
Because it will make a difference to them, and I like what you said, I like the idea of having a container out there, I don't like seeing it ripped up. I don't like seeing kids drive by and see how many of them they can hit, just for the fun of it.
It's going to be the same thing with the dumpster.
Yeah.
It's all going to be a target for our recycling. But back, back to that, the whole deal with the bag, that's why when you leave them over thirty pounds, that's what they're getting paid for, is up to thirty pounds, that's what that rate is figured into the cost of that bag, so when they're fifty pounds, they leave them late, because they're losing money, that's kind of the idea of why anything over thirty pounds sets at the curb until...
But when I see a bag, talk to somebody, the bag weighed thirty-four pounds, if you were in the garbage business, would you pick that bag up or would you leave it?
Depends on the thirty-four-pound bags you get there every week.
Well, say, say it's once or twice, I mean, would you leave the garbage bag for four pounds or not?
Depends on which one of my neighbors, what I like, mine's been left more than once for being overweight, so.
What does the contract usually run, three years, five years?
It'd been five years since the last term, but...
Well, I think if we're going to, if we're going to look at supplying cans, if the city's going to supply the cans, or if the haulers are going to supply the cans, or where that's going to come from, that's, we might going to have to extend the term of their contract for more than three years, if we're looking at putting out some investment.
I don't think you can go under five years if you're going to do that.
Oh, it depends, is the city going to buy the cans or is it cans, they're already paying them.
They're paying for the bags and the drive-by fee, just...
Yeah, so we're just going to let, yeah, but you're going to make them buy a city can, or are you going to have...
They would need to be similar in can.
They have to have, well, that's what I mean, one go to Sam's, one go to Ace's, one you got a red one, you got a green one, you got a black one.
They all have...
You know, one that, you know, how many, it can either be the haulers or the city buying the can.
Right.
You can't see any other way around that, I think it's, it's...
It's got to be uniformed to buy.
Right.
Which got Heinz fifty-seven.
Any different sizes.
Yeah.
So if that's going to be more branded than the contract.
Buy the can and have uniformed again, right?
Yes, I mean, we got to do a big bulk order and...
Yeah, we could, we could figure that into the cost of what we're charging for residents.
But she says that can be utilized, say it's a hundred dollars per can, be utilized over the, as part of like the drive, you know, we'll insert the drive bags, put it up for ten years or five years.
A hundred dollars right there, all the way to the mouth.
Well, it depends what kind of grade of garbage can you're going to get, you can find them for thirty bucks, I'm sure you can get them for the one hundred and fifty, if you're going to want something that's durable, you can get a thirty-dollar can for less than a year.
Before, that, there were a lot of times, there was very rarely, in eight hundred, eight hundred customers, there was very rarely that cans got damaged, and I was there for five years, I didn't see one can damaged that it needed to be replaced. If it was to the point where it needed to be replaced, I'll replace it, but, um, I never, they were very sturdy, I don't, I don't know if they were forty-four bucks top sturdy, but they were...
Well, what I've got has lasted me for five years, and it's just as good today as the day I got it, I mean, I'm here in a small place, but... Yeah, I wife my own, wife makes me.
You got to work a little harder if you're going to bust that thing up, so.
Well, I don't want to bust it up, I might have to pay for the next one.
So I, you know, we kind of have a paid method right now with the recycling bin, we've, we've given everybody a recycling, or two recycling bins, and if they're not there, they're paying for additional ones, so, you know, it's not uncommon practice in community to have to pay the city for the, like, can, I haven't had to replace one of them, the one was the first one.
Lauren, you're thinking pretty hard over there.
This is kind of deja vu, oh, and five years ago or more, we were talking about all this stuff, and it was a rival of what we currently have as the best overall deal. And the cans versus the bags, the two haulers versus, we'll turn it up to everybody, BSI would be in pretty soon, the locals would be out, you know, and the rates have gone up, so, I mean, it went through the whole works, so I, I think the system we have works pretty well.
But through that process, didn't you exclude the local haulers that a lot of people in the community wanted?
And we've had annexation since, so I think it's more feasible now to have a third hauler than at that time. Now it looks a little, especially if the other two haulers...
We did do a, we did do a count on, on the households set up, split up in the community, and they, and there's a pretty equitable split. If you go three ways, and I'm probably going to get this wrong, but this, the eastern port, northeast portion of town equated to about seven hundred and...
It was nine hundred.
Oh, not yet, so, yeah, nine hundred and, yeah, nine hundred and ten, and then if you combine the southeast and the northwest, it was nine hundred and eleven, and if you combine the southwest and the Riverwood, which is the Bell Prairie area, then it was like nine hundred and sixty, so.
So that's a little bigger.
Little bigger, um, you know...
Greg's way, if you rotate.
If you rotated, you're on the...
Every third year, Clinton haulers are going to get the bigger route through, fifty more planes.
Jerry?
I like the can with the bag, just throw your bag, like, not everything bag.
No green bag, no blue bag, no red bags?
You know, you string their garbage bag, but I'd rather, you know, I would go for the bags, I would want it just...
Just down?
Yep, because I do think that people with just that option of throwing it in there will just throw everything in there, you know, and not do the, not do the recycling. And I believe we should, you know, push for recycling as much as possible.
We, there's no discussion on our end of building any recycling.
I think most people that recycle do it because they want to recycle, not because it's, you have to or you, you don't have to, they're just for the environmental, they want to...
If you don't throw it in the bag, you're saving more towards a dollar forty-two.
You can more throw up.
Anyone else before we give a direction, so you intend to take that back then to the E E committee? Enough on garbage for now, we'll be back.
Okay.
Bench, City Hall?
Um, as we've discussed before, and I think this is, was part of the deal, the lease expired on the bench at City Hall, and Jeff is curious if we wanted to extend that lease, or if it was, it was brought up prior to that once that expired, we could look at just eliminating the bench from this location, so.
I'm in agreement with that, get rid of it, not to bring up any old stuff, but at one time it wasn't there, and I really think it's unfair that if one person could advertise on there, why a whole lot of others can't, but you have to pretty much give it to one person, so. I would just consider going.
Do we have, maybe have the benches on city property?
No.
Okay, because I thought it's similar, that, you know, if somebody wants to advertise there on city property, you're going to think that, um... Is there anything we want to add?
You'd have to spend some money.
How often is that bench used to sit there?
I haven't seen a person sit on it.
I haven't either, no, and I, I, I agree with Frank you, that I don't think the bench should be there. Being that it's, you know, city property, and like, like you said, advertisement on there, people drive by, you automatically assume that they must be condoning whatever it is that you're, you know, and that's his first impression. Just for the future, for any kind of other hassles or problems, I just think it'd be a smart move just to take that bench away.
Jeff's bench, right?
Yeah.
Do you have another place to put the bench?
Um...
Well, he's already invested in the bench, you know, so now, same with the bench.
We approved one solid here by the initiative fund, I see there's still one there.
There's one purchased for there.
Right, but this one here, is this one half of it's broke anyhow, correct?
Yes, it is.
The one that's all here?
Yep.
Okay.
It was hooked by a snowball or something in the, in the winter, I was waiting to hear what you decided before I, before I replace that in.
I don't would be asking too much to have you take that one out of there?
No, I could take it out, that's fine.
I think we should... Otherwise, I would remove it strictly to remove it from city property, as the only one in town, and not do the plum tans or any of that kind of stuff. It's just a matter of, you best not to have a bench or something like that.
Are we going to need a motion in regular meeting to discontinue that, or if we would, or...
Yeah, I think it would be prudent to add it.
And there's discontinue the benches involved.
Thank you, sir. Okay, no. Anything on our other, anybody?
Well, of course, it's doing great. Well, we don't...
You don't need to talk all the way to the election.
Yeah, move that above garbage.
Yeah, we touched that early, so that in case...
There'll be another next year's discussion when we're done.
We're going to add that.
Our next meeting.
Add that to the, and then I have one other item, just a correction in the minutes, under the special work session, public forum, to add, and item three. Minnesota has the second largest, second highest suicide rate.
Okay, we'll adjourn to seven-thirty for early meeting.